I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's six thirty-one P M. We allow public comment during our meetings. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item either virtually or in person, you are to have emailed your comments or your request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. Same rules apply on speaking. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder seated up here prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city of Gladstone, Oregon is situated on the traditional lands of the Clackamas, Chinook, and Kalapulia tribes. The rich history, culture, and contributions of these indigenous peoples who stewarded this land for thousands of years is worthy of acknowledgement and appreciation. I am grateful for the opportunity to live, work, and gather on these ancestral lands and to commit to learning from the wisdom and resilience of the indigenous communities that continue to shape the region. Moving forward, I want us all to strive to build relationships based on mutual respect, understanding, and collaboration with one another and the indigenous peoples of this land, to work together to protect and preserve the natural beauty and resources of this area, and to ensure a substantial, a sustainable and harmonious future for all who call Gladstone home. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Let's stand for the flag, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our agenda for tonight's meeting includes our consent agenda, approval of the March twelfth regular minutes, approval of the February bank balances, budget report for the period ending two twenty-nine twenty-four, approval of the February check register, legal costs for January and February of two thousand and twenty-four, department head monthly reports for March of two thousand and twenty-four, and approval of an Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission, O L C C, application for H N S Energy nineteen-eight fifty McLaughlin Boulevard. We will have our report from Clackamas Fire District and Gladstone City event announcements before moving on to our regular agenda. So, and Administrator Betts, are there any additional items for our agenda tonight?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Regarding the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Any discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. Now we call upon the Clackamas Fire District representatives to come forward for their monthly report. Welcome, Chief Stewart.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us again. Tonight on your agenda, we had Captain Greg Ledoux plan to attend. He called out sick tonight, so pitch hitting tonight is Lieutenant Jared Wick. I'll go ahead and let Lieutenant jump in. Just a couple of thoughts from his perspective. One of the things I asked him to share since he's not normally at Gladstone was kind of his perspectives on what it's like to cover into a station and what that kind of feels like and how that benefits the station today and the other work that he does.
So, like Chief said, today I'm working with the crew here in Gladstone. My normal station is in Happy Valley Station Six, so I'm kind of like the substitute today. So these guys are showing me around, but they're taking great care of me. And it's one thing I've always liked about Gladstone. I've worked here a few shifts so far is that the neighborhood feel that I get from the community. So I've been out in front of the apron while we wash the rig, and everyone is always smiling and greeting us and thanking us for being here, and that's always really nice to see.
Thank you very much. Good to hear.
Thanks, Jared. So a few things just to share with you all. Certainly, it's budget season, and I share that in particular because coming up in May, after the pro forma budget, we'll be having our budget committee meetings, and those are open to the public, and just an opportunity to share that, and we invite all members of the public to either attend by Zoom or come in person to those meetings of the budget hearing eventually if they're so interested. A couple of other pieces. Back on April first, the Wildland Hand Crew, Crew Thirty, is back up and started, so they have started their time with us. I think twelve of the twenty-two are coming back from previous seasons, and we've hired a couple others into other positions, firefighters or logistics positions as well. But so their first two weeks was spent on some, I don't want to say basic, but introductory and refresher Wildland training, and then this coming week is what they term helicopter week. So they only get one day with the helicopter, but the days leading up to it are aviation, working with hazardous materials because we carry fuel and other things onto aircraft. Obviously, there's concerns and hazards associated with that. So they'll be spending the first three weeks in the classroom and working around the helicopter piece. Another piece related to training, and we happened to be talking about this before the meeting started, we have a new training facility that we're getting up and running. It's a small facility about the size of this room, but it's over by Station Four, which is both a truck house and our battalion house. That's off of Lake Road in two twenty-four. You'll see it right there at the intersection. So behind there sits a small cinder block building, and Chief Huffman, many of you know him, is responsible for that building, and they're putting EMS in there. So they have a couple EMS offices, and they're doing a setting up a training conference room, but that is going to have some virtual reality training for us. Chief Huffman secured a grant, I don't know the amount, to get a few V R units, and it's centralized around multi casualty training. So one of those trainings that is very difficult for us to put on, do the number of victims that you need, the number of people that you need to be able to process it, time to set up, time to break down. So he's working with a company that's out of Australia to build a package which uses our units, our equipment, all of those things. So it's very realistic in that scenario. So that'll be fantastic. It'll be housed out of there initially to start, but his vision of it is certainly being able to train everybody from Milwaukee and Gladstone out to Boring and getting the right people without having to move units out of their service areas and making sure that we have that response available. A couple other pieces. We just started a new position about three weeks ago. We hired a project and facilities manager. So a gal named Denise Toyoka is responsible for our forty-six facilities, buildings and structures on our properties. So she's got a lot to jump into, but she's already proven to be a fantastic addition, so looking forward to working with her. Starting next week, I expect on the fifteenth, might be a week after that, we'll be opening a recruitment for Community Resilience Officer. So what that position means, not only is it a great opportunity, if anybody's listening and interested, but also what this Community Resilience Officer, their intent is, is to be one of the key people who understand our communities and what their needs are, and how Clackamas Fire can help fill those pieces. So whether it's from a public education piece, whether it's from another risk management piece, which is actual response, making sure that we understand the diverse communities that we serve and that we're reaching out to each of those, whether it's through partners or directly, but really being that conduit to help us drive our programming and how we resource internally so we can address each of the community's needs. So that'll be an interesting and terrific position that I've been waiting to get on the books, and we're finally able to get there. And then lastly, just another training piece. Unfortunately, it's a lot of training and not a lot of incidents today to talk about, but Will Amity has been kind enough to donate two houses to us. So just across River Road from Will Amity, our crews have been spending a couple weeks. I think it wraps up on Thursday this week of doing training in those small houses, which is fantastic for us. You can only run into a training tower so many times before you know how many crawls it takes to get to one spot to turn left, to turn right, and do your thing. So any opportunity that we get to work on actual structures is appreciated. And I think this week is destructive training, which means they get the opportunity to breach holes, breach doors, cut holes in roofs, and those types of things, those skills that are really difficult to practice in a realistic environment without the support of our community partners. So that's what we have tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Other questions from council members? You mentioned budgeting. When we do budgeting at the city, we do it every two years, but we have a budget committee, half citizens, half elected officials. Do you have a similar process in the Fire District? Do you have a body of elected officials that oversee your budgeting process?
Yeah, so our, great question. So our budgeting process is on an annual basis, so we go through the same full process each year. The district is governed by a five-person board of directors, and so that five is augmented by an equal five of citizen budget committee members. So those ten form together to make the budget committee, very similar to what you would have here in the city.
Good, good to understand that. You were getting some radio calls. Are you guys underway out? Okay. Not an emergency. Other questions from councilors? Well, thank you very much. You know, oh, go ahead, Counselor Roberts.
It's just what I always say, just continued to be surprised and blown away with your guys' preparedness and preventative maintenance. That V R stuff sounds really cool, and so I look forward to seeing when the posts come out about that, so we see more about what that looks like.
Absolutely, and it should be up and running in July is our target date, if all the construction goes well. And I'd love to host you folks and come see it and play with it yourselves and kind of see what the firefighters go through.
Absolutely. Just like a little kid, I'd love to say yes to that. Thank you.
Well, my comment was about the same. You know, it's the preparedness for all different contingencies that possibly could come up, and your training, the broad scope of your training just continues to impress me, too. So I know that you're looking out for every building scenario, every event scenario, and every, you know, environmental scenario that you could possibly be called to, and the more training you do, the better you're going to perform when you get there. So we don't want those things to happen, but when they do, we want to send a prepared crew, and we're glad that you're working for us and on my behalf. So thank you so much for coming tonight. Good to meet you. Glad you're on board here locally for a while. Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Gladstone City event announcements. I understand we have had some people who requested to speak tonight. So Tammy, will you call them forward?
We have three. The first is Nancy Ickston.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak to the council tonight. I just wanted to give you an update on our Arbor Day and plant sale event that's happening on April twenty-seventh at the end of the month, and it's from nine o'clock to two. And the highlights this year is that we have twenty-four nurseries who have donated plants, eighteen local vendors, mostly nonprofits, and, you know, a lot of our local friends that we see at these things. The Gladstone High School this year is going to be building mason bee houses and birdhouses that they're selling. The youth transition program is actually going to sell some herbs and some houseplants that they've been working on in the greenhouse over behind the high school. Gladstone Baseball Association has come on board to do concessions, so you'll be likely to get a hot dog, or I heard something about biscuits and gravy at that event, and we always have our Kracksburger electronic recycling program going there along with the food barrel for the food bank. So if you come, make sure you throw a can of tuna or something in your pocket. The Clackamas County Free Seed Library will be there just in time for you to get your seeds for your garden. And both the Clackamas Bookshelf and the Clackamas County Library are going to be giving out books for kids, and we're hoping to get a lot of kids because we're planting a tree for Arbor Day courtesy of our council here, and the kids will come and hopefully get a book and help plant the tree and get a sticker and help celebrate Arbor Day with us. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you for, Nancy, for updating us on all of that. We appreciate it. Any questions? All right. Who do we have next, Tammy?
Next is Ginger Zimpbaum.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, three minutes. I have a lot to say. So, let's see. I'm Ginger Zimpbaum. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the Gladstone School District. This Friday, John Wetton Elementary is celebrating Career Day. It's a very exciting and fun day for our students, and we've scheduled a lot of parents and community members to come in and share about their careers with our students. I want to give a huge thank you to the city of Gladstone and to Administrator Betts for providing us with many of our speakers. Thank you to City Works and to Judge Lindgren, to Gladstone P D, who will have an officer there for the entire day, to Clackamas County Fire and Gladstone's very own engine company. They will also be present. I think when Jackie emailed me and let me know that we got that she was sending us a judge, I nearly fell out of my chair because it's so incredible to be able to expose our students to that. I don't think a lot of them have ever met a judge. And then while I'm up here, I would also like to take the opportunity to thank council and the city for being so very supportive with the many other events and programs that we have had going on in our school district this year. At Everybody Reads Day back in March, we were lucky enough to have Administrator Betts, Mayor Milch, Chief Schmerber, our new S R O Officer Teague, our Code Enforcement Officer McNeil, Clackamas Fire, and and a few others from the city who also came in to read to our students. Mayor Milch and Counselor Huckabee have both been very involved at G H S doing mock interviews for two different terms this year with our students and helping prepare them for life after high school, and that's like a really priceless gift, so thank you for that. We have a few different programs collaborating between our school district and the Gladstone Community Center. Michelle has been absolutely phenomenal hosting field trips. We have J W E classes that are doing walking field trips over there. They're having lunch with the seniors, and they're doing projects. We have another group of students who are doing Penn Pal programs with seniors who are homebound. The work that the city has done to get that food pantry grant is just the biggest gift ever. Thank you for that. That will keep our school-based food pantry that also serves the community going for a while longer. And I'd like to give a big shout out to Counselor Roberts for the work that he's done with the Gladstone Youth Council, getting that up and going. That's an amazing feat right there, and I'm so excited to have that come into our district. This is all very exciting to me. Back when I was a school board member and we had our first joint council and school board session, and we talked about what we would like to see and that collaborative effort, and all of you are putting those words and ideas in making it come to fruition, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Ginger.
There's one more. Bob Everett.
Better contact me for those interviews. I used to do it all the time.
Oh, okay.
I love doing it. Yeah, thank you. My favorite day of the month, here Tuesday, seeing everyone here. I do appreciate you listening to me and hearing what I have to say. So first off, of course, bingo. We're on to our last two months. This month will be the Art Guild. They're trying to raise funds because in and June the first, they are going to have a art fair down on Portland Avenue, and that runs from noon till four. I have my little notes here of times and things because we've added. The next month will be the high school. Again, it's the third weekend of the month, or third Friday of the month, excuse me, and it's going to be the high school band, or I'm sorry, the choir. And they're already signed up and ready to rock and roll, so to speak. Hopefully, they'll do a few tunes there. In addition, I always like to talk about the closed closet because we're there this Saturday. The Rotary Club is there this Saturday. And I call that the men's club because it always seems to be the three men that come out there then, too. So we really enjoy it. We also, again, I'm going to mention the Arts Fair again, June the first, noon to four. We're participating in that, and we're very excited because we're going to be starting up Movies in the Park this summer. Our club is basically going to be putting, we're getting a screen. We have the sound system all ready, and we're going to, it's going to be, we're going to try to continue on every the third Friday, although June will be a little bit different. We already have that scheduled. We have June the fourteenth. I have to look at these because it's new. Princess Bride. Then July the nineteenth, we'll be Back to the Future, and then on the twentieth of September, we'll be we'll be, what did we decide we were going to have? Because we changed. Anyway, it'll be fun. I'll announce it sometime along. So come on around. It's free for everyone. We will be selling popcorn and candy and all those accoutrements that go to a movie, and hopefully we'll get nice weather all the time. I think that's about it. Any questions or anything like that? So I said a lot in the three minutes, and hopefully I didn't.
I just want to say fantastic movie choices.
Oh, well, I thought so. And, golly, what? And it's one of my favorite movies and.
Return of the Jedi.
No, no, it was going to be, we can't get that. It costs too much to get that, and Bryce just texted me because we just changed Little Shop of Horrors. So, and I love Little Shop of Horrors. So, anyway. Any questions? Okay, thank you so very much, and I'll see you next month. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Everett. Thank you to all our community members. You don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. We will not be offended if you leave now, but thank you for keeping us posted on what's going on in the community. We move now to our regular agenda items. We have several, including consideration of a letter of support to the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for their Scattered Sites Section Eighteen disposition application, a resolution, number twelve thirty-five, proclaiming Arbor Day in the city of Gladstone, approval of a contract for the city of Gladstone paving project, another ordinance, fifteen thirty, amending several sections of Gladstone Municipal Code, an intergovernmental agreement, I G A, of the Regional Water Providers Consortium, and another I G A between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone for debris removal in the event of an emergency declaration. And we have a couple of business carried forward items we'll get to later on. So first item is regarding the scattered sites of housing owned by Clackamas County, and I understand we have an online guest for that.
That is correct, Mayor and City Council. So let me set the stage a little bit before I bring in our guest to do a presentation. Couple weeks ago, the county administrator had sent some information asking cities to provide a letter of support to the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's Section Eighteen disposition application. So many of you are aware, there's been a lot of work for affordable housing through the bond and supportive housing services measure that's been part of a strategic plan in Clackamas County. They're going to talk a little bit about the great work that they've been doing countywide, and then talk a little bit about what these scattered sites are. There are seven in Gladstone, and there are various in other cities, and they are repositioning and reinvesting into future affordable housing, and they would request a letter of support from the city council. So tonight, we have Vaheed Brown and Devin Ellen from Clackamas County Housing Authority to provide you a brief presentation.
Welcome, Vaheed. We can see you. And is Devin going to be joining you?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I think Devin needs to be promoted. She is, she's on, but hasn't been promoted.
All right, we're working on that on this end.
Thanks. I'll introduce myself to the record while we're waiting. Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Vaheed Brown. I use he in pronouns. I'm the Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development for Clackamas County. My colleague Devin Ellen is going to take the lead on this presentation tonight.
Good evening. I'm going to just share my screen here. I have a presentation. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, great. So I'm Devin Ellen. I'm the Director of Housing Development with the Housing Authority, and I'm here to talk about a process the Housing Authority is undertaking to reposition its public housing portfolio, which includes seven scattered site public homes in the city of Gladstone. So the Housing Authority's portfolio consists of three one-hundred-unit multifamily developments, Hillside Park in Milwaukee and Clackamas Heights and Oregon City View Manor in Oregon City. And then we also have a hundred and forty-five unit scattered site portfolio consisting of single-family homes located throughout Clackamas County. So why, what is repositioning? So Clackamas County has the oldest public housing in Oregon and among the oldest in the country, and for decades now, the federal government has reduced budgets for public housing repairs and operations, and housing authorities are struggling to adequately maintain their public housing units. In place of investing in public housing, the federal government has increased its investment in affordable housing programs like the Section Eight Rental Assistance Program and the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. In two thousand and eighteen, recognizing that housing authorities across the country were facing significant backlogs of capital needs, HUD created a program to allow housing authorities to reposition their public housing portfolios to a more sustainable platform like Section Eight. So repositioning essentially means converting the assistance that the housing authorities receive from the federal government through HUD from public housing or the Section Nine program to Section Eight rental assistance. And the main difference being that in public housing, the subsidy is attached to the unit, and in Section Eight, the subsidy is attached to the tenant, and in some cases, it can be project-based to a unit. And the reason we're excited about repositioning is it will allow us to replace our public housing portfolio with new rental assistance vouchers and newly developed affordable housing. And this will happen through a process of relocating existing residents using new rent assistance vouchers allocated by HUD as part of the process and either disposing of the units or redeveloping them. So the Housing Authority, as noted in the letter, plans to use a process called Section Eighteen disposition. And as part of that process, each household that is converted and displaced through the process will receive a Section Eight Tenant Protection voucher and relocation assistance. So the voucher will provide households with the rental assistance that will allow them to move to a location and unit of their choosing. Using the voucher, our team of relocation specialists commissioned by the Housing Authority will help each household find replacement housing that suits their individual needs, whether that includes exploring homeownership opportunities, moving into the private rental market, or moving into a unit owned by the Housing Authority. All residents will also be provided the right to return to a newly constructed home once redevelopment is complete. If they choose to return to a new property, their moving costs will be covered by the Housing Authority. So why is this happening now? The passing of the two thousand and eighteen Metro Affordable Housing Bond and the two thousand and twenty Supportive Housing Services Measure presents the Housing Authority with the unique opportunity to use its existing public housing assets to leverage public and private resources to increase affordable housing opportunities in Clackamas County. As part of the bond program, we set aside nearly half of our revenue to reposition, and we've allocated supportive housing services funding to this as well. So, you know, we think that this is a really big opportunity for the Housing Authority. As I mentioned, our properties are divided into these kind of four property groupings, Hillside Park, Oregon City View Manor, Clackamas Heights, and then the single-family homes. Um, and for the scattered site portfolio, um, of which seven are located in Gladstone, um, we plan to dispose of the properties through one of three scenarios. Um, first, our priority is to be able to provide affordable homeownership opportunities for existing residents, um, utilizing either a fee simple, um, if they're able to purchase the home or through a land trust model. So we've been communicating with, um, Proud Ground and Habitat for Humanity, um, about ways that we can get people ready. Um, we have a, a two-year process that we're undertaking um, to get folks signed up for individual development accounts and family self-sufficiency programs that will allow them to, um, deposit funds that the Housing Authority matches into a, um, an account that will, you know, hopefully provide them the ability to, um, you know, uh, to provide them the ability to purchase the home and their down payment. Um, the second scenario is, um, providing recovery-oriented transitional homes in some of these units um, in partnerships with community-based housing service providers, um, by leveraging supportive housing services funds. And that's why I have the heat here to talk about that if you have questions. And then our last, our last, um, scenario is, is selling them on the private market. Um, so if, for whatever reason, the properties don't fit for homeownership or the recovery oriented care, then, then we would sell those units. And all the sale proceeds, um, are restricted by HUD for affordable housing. So the Housing Authority will, you know, be using those, um, those funds to support, uh, some of our redevelopment efforts like Hillside Park and Clackamas Sites and other projects throughout the county. So as you can see, the, from the map, um, our portfolio is located in jurisdictions all over the county, including, uh, the seven in Gladstone. Um, the portfolio consists primarily of three and four bedroom units. Um, and then we have, uh, twelve duplexes, one triplex and a fourplex. And in Gladstone, you have, um, seven units comprised of five single-family homes and one duplex. And all of them are three bedroom units. Um, so as part of the section eighteen process, um, the Housing Authority is hoping to secure support for the disposition application from the city of Gladstone. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to present and, um, would love to answer any questions you have.
Devin, this is Mayor Milch. Um, one question, could you say a little bit more? Explain the community land trust model, uh, for any of us who aren't familiar with that. You mentioned Habitat for Humanity. We're familiar with them as a place where volunteers help in the construction of homes. But talk about what Proud Ground and Habitat do in terms of land ownership and how that affects the cost of affordable housing.
Sure, yeah, great question. Um, so in this scenario, the Housing Authority, through the section eighteen process, um, we, we need to sell the homes at fair market value. Um, but we do have the opportunity to provide some seller financing, um, after the fact, um, to bring down the cost of the home. So, and that's, in that scenario, we would partner with a land trust, like say Proud Ground. Um, they retain ownership of the underlying land. Um, the homeowner, um, purchases the improvement, the home. Um, and then the Housing Authority provides, you know, a forgivable or however we end up structuring it, some type of loan, um, to cover the difference between what, um, the homeowner can purchase and the market price of the home.
So in this case, a home that perhaps normally would sell for four hundred thousand, might sell for two hundred thousand because they're actually buying the house alone, not the land. Uh, and, and still, as I understand, some of these scenarios still are able to, uh, be homeowners in that situation while the, while the land is being long-term leased. Okay. Are there other questions from, uh, yeah, Counselor Alexander?
Yeah, when you read through this, when I was reading through it, you just can't help but wonder, I mean, um, so Westland and Wilsonville, there's not that much of a need, obviously. Do they not, is that not going on there? I mean, two homes in Wilsonville, two, two sites in Westland. Is that, is there a reason for that or? I know seven is not that many for Gladstone, but we're a smaller area.
Right. I mean, those are just the homes that are in our portfolio. Um, and so I'm, I'm not sure how they were, you know, originally acquired. Um, that predates me by several decades. Um, but yeah, those are just the, the homes that, um, the public housing that the Housing Authority owns in those locations.
All right, thanks.
Counselor Cook, you have a question?
Yeah, hello. Um, I have a couple of questions just, um, about, uh, the program. So the vouchers that will be issued if you, if we do get to a place where, um, you know, the current residents are unable to purchase their properties and they are displaced. Um, can you tell me about how the credit is calculated for those vouchers and what the X-free date is? Um, for that, that voucher for those folks who would be displaced?
Right. So, so each subsidy is calculated on a, a variety of things. Um, mainly by, you know, based on the individual's income. So I can't give you like an exact number, but, um, the, the goal is to make it so that they're paying no more than thirty percent of their, whatever income they have toward housing. Um, and they can stay in the program as long as they qualify in perpetuity.
And then currently their scenario, how does that compare to what they're currently being offered in the homes that they're currently residing in?
It's the same. Um, so they pay thirty percent of their income. There can be some differences. So the Housing Authority, in public housing, the Housing Authority pays for all the utilities. In, um, section eight, there's what's called a utility allowance. Um, so it's just a, a chart that HUD publishes every year. So it does make some assumptions. So I think that's like the only area where there could be increases, um, in what they currently pay.
Okay, cool. And then for, um, what does the inventory currently look like? Um, is there vacant housing that accepts vouchers, specifically three-bedroom units? Because we know that that's what our Gladstone residents have currently.
Yeah, great question. Um, well, I will note that we, we've done an inventory of our public housing and, and a, a large portion of, um, households living in the scattered sites are what, what's called overhoused by HUD standards. Um, so they may not necessarily, you know, qualify for a three-bedroom given their, um, household size when, when their vouchers issued. Um, but to, to speak to inventory, um, as part of the Metro Bond Program, um, in all of the new units that are coming online right now, the Housing Authority has written into those lease agreements, um, that folks displaced due to public housing repositioning would get priority on the waiting list at those units. So, um, we are going through relocation right now. I think we are just wrapping it up on Hillside Park and we have successfully, you know, housed folks and found housing that's suitable for them.
Is there a possibility of a scenario where these folks are displaced and they have vouchers, but they're unable to find housing with those vouchers? Is that going to be?
Um, we are required to find them adequate housing. So no one can go, you know, homeless through this process. Um, if they, you know, find housing and then move out, um, you know, it's, it is up to them to, to find, you know, housing. Um, but there will be no, you know, homelessness caused by this disposition and relocation process.
Um, and then out of curiosity of the three scenarios, there were kind of three scenarios about what happened to these homes. Obviously, the first is what we want to see, these people being able to purchase the homes that they're living in. Um, fourth, uh, but I know this is kind of like a little, I'm asking you to speculate a little bit, which I recognize is uncomfortable. But, um, do you, what, what percentage of, of these outcomes, of the three outcomes that you guys outlined? Um, how likely is it, do you think that we're going to be able to get folks into that first option? How many do you think are going to land into the second option? Um, and how many do you think are just going to go to a private sale?
Hard to speculate. Our goal with the recovery-oriented units is up to seventy-five units. Um, so that would be roughly half of them. Um, and we had originally proposed, you know, twenty-five units for homeownership. Um, and when we presented to the Board of Commissioners, they really wanted us to push for more. Um, so that is our goal. We, we love that idea. We'd love to see half and half, um, go to those programs and, and none of them sold on the public market.
Okay.
Counselor Cook, if I could add something to, to what Devin said on the, the likelihood in, of the seven units and where they might fit in those three scenarios. Um, one of the things that the, the land trust partners have said is that they would, they would prioritize in, in the available inventory, homes built after nineteen seventy-eight. Um, all but one of the seven homes in Gladstone were built after nineteen seventy-eight. Um, so there is probably a likelihood there that one of those seven would end up on the private market sale category with those private market sale proceeds going to the Housing Authority to, to fund further affordable housing development. Um, but so that's, that's one criteria. So, so six of the seven would be potentially available to, to be slotted within that homeownership category by, by that rubric.
Got it. Okay. My, I think you can probably infer as to why I'm asking those questions. I want to make sure that, you know, that, that number one option that's laid out, that that's not just window dressing or something that we're saying like, gosh, it would be great if, um, you know, my, my intention in asking those questions is to kind of figure out like, how plausible is it for these residents to be able to purchase the homes that they're living in?
I'll just add that we know that we have at least thirty residents that are very interested in purchasing, um, either the home that they're living in or a home in the portfolio and, you know, are actively working toward getting that down payment. So, um, and then we're not limited to just folks, you know, that are Housing Authority residents. The, um, the land trusts have long waiting lists of folks that are, you know, housing ready and have gone through their program.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Garland.
I was just, I was wondering if you could answer, how many of the units in Gladstone are currently, uh, manufactured homes in the mobile home parks?
N- n- none of them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I was just gonna thank Counselor Cook for asking all of the questions that I had, so.
Counselor Roberts.
Um, in your analysis there, Devin, you mentioned that many people are classified as overhoused. Will you please elaborate as to what the HUD standard is that classifies those people?
You were gonna ask that. Um, so I, I, I believe it, um, it's dependent on, you know, if a family of four has two children and they're a boy and a girl, then I think that it can be, um, they're eligible for a three-bedroom house. Um, assuming there, you know, there's two parents and then, you know, one, and then if they're both of the same sex, then, then it's a two-bedroom. Um, but I, I can clarify that and get back to you. It's, it's a little bit nuanced, but.
And then secondly, I'm sure nineteen seventy-eight isn't an arbitrary number.
Yeah, it's when, um, lead-based paint was outlawed, so.
Okay, I had a feeling. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Reichel, I believe you had a question or a comment?
Yes, I have, um, just a couple of questions, uh, regarding the, first of all, you had mentioned that one of the locations in Gladstone is a duplex. Um, obviously that may not fit into the first option of homeownership by the current tenants. How, like, how are things going to work for those types of units within the county?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Um, the land trusts have, you know, expressed that they, they can work with duplexes. It's just a more complicated real estate transaction. Um, but they, they'd also be well-suited for, you know, recovery-oriented care. Um, so, you know, that might be a good candidate for, um, for something in, in, you know, that bucket.
Okay, I'm glad you mentioned that because that was going to be my second question. Um, those re- recovery homes, um, what group or how are those, um, residents and how are they supported like through that process? And what qualifies someone to be in recovery housing like that? The reason, I, I just ask because we have some existing locations in Gladstone and, you know, we want to make sure that we are prepared to support those systems as best as possible. And I think it would be helpful for us to understand kind of what that means for us as well. And thank you in advance.
Vaheed, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor. That's, that's a great question. Um, so the, the, um, the kinds of program uses that we're contemplating with this, um, this group or this bucket of the houses, Devin mentioned that, um, we were looking at hopefully utilizing seventy-five of the homes throughout the portfolio throughout the county for the recovery-oriented system of care. That, that category, recovery-oriented system of care, is broader than just recovery homes and al- although it includes them. Um, but it, it also, we would, in a, in a solicitation, if we know, we, we get to the point of, of offering opportunities to community-based organizations to purchase these homes for the, for the operation of recovery-oriented system of care programming, we would ask for, um, proposals that, that speak to a variety of different types of specialty housing or supportive transitional housing, one of which is recovery housing. So that's, you know, and, and there are nu- a, a handful of types of recovery housing. Um, there's drug and alcohol-free community housing, which is something you might be familiar with, like an Oxford House. It's a model where there's onsite peer staff that helps support people in recovery from addiction, uh, in living in an alcohol and drug-free environment and, um, really kind of maintaining that environment for the, for the, um, sustainability of their recovery journey. Um, in a, in a housing situation that's low cost and, uh, is, um, where your, your roommates or your housemates are on the same recovery journey. So that's a very successful model. That's one type. But we, we had also, um, uh, shared with our board and, and we would be asking for proposals from community partners um, in a lot of different varieties to meet different types of needs. Um, for example, medical respite housing, which could be, uh, uh, let's say a duplex or a single-family home that has, um, specially outfitted rooms with, um, uh, you know, uh, medical supplies and onsite medical staff, like a registered nurse and staff and staff that the registered nurse would have to be able to support them, where, uh, someone who is very low income or who was experiencing homelessness and was in the emergency department or in the hospital, but did not need ongoing hospitalization. Medical respite is a, is a critical component of, of like the, of the medical process for people in those situations. It's often non-existent in our communities. Clackamas County has no medical respite housing. Um, Molina County for a long time has had one program operated by such a city concern. And Washington County recently stood up its first medical respite program. So that's another example where it would be, um, onsite medical staff. Um, there could also be, um, um, recovery housing for folks who are in, who, who are, it, it's not just, uh, an alcohol and drug-free uh, housing situation like an Oxford House, but one that has onsite clinical staff to support people who are earlier on in their recovery and need, um, medical support. So medically assisted, um, treatment for, um, for being successful in, in, um, kicking an addiction. Um, so it's, it's not just drug and alcohol recovery, but when we use the recovery-oriented system of care, we mean, um, specialty housing that is often best suited to small housing situations. It doesn't really work well to do a thing, a program like this in a large complex or in a, you know, in a large facility. It, it, so many of these types of programs are most successful in smaller settings, um, that are more intimate and that where the staff often live in the property. Um, that include drug and alcohol recovery, uh, medical recovery from, from hospitals. Um, that include drug and alcohol recovery, uh, medical recovery from, from hospitalization. Um, behavioral health support. So this would all be articulated, the, the categories in our, in our, um, solicitation. But, you know, therapeutic group homes, um, is, is a, 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 another one. And we would be soliciting population specific specialty housing that might be, um, dedicated to the needs of older adults, um, that don't need adult foster care or, um, and also don't need hospitalization but are not able to live alone and independently. Um, so it's a rather broad category. Um, and I've said a lot about it, so I, I wanna stop myself and see if that answers your question. Well, you did ask about specifically who would, how would people be selected and how would they be supported? And I think it depends on the type. So the, the medical respite housing, for example, Counselor would be, that would be something that we would have a relationship with the hospital systems for a discharge. So the, 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 the resident in that, uh, medical respite housing would be someone who was discharging from a hospital setting. Um, and their eligibility would have to do with what other setting they would be discharging to. If they weren't able to discharge to a home because they didn't have a home to discharge to, then they would be eligible for a medical respite discharge. And then if someone was needing to live in an alcohol and drug free housing situation, then there would be someone in active recovery from a substance use disorder who is, um, who doesn't need clinical support or medical support to maintain their sobriety, but just needs a supportive environment with peers onsite and on staff who can help maintain the drug and alcohol free nature of the community. So it would depend uh, on the type of housing in, in each specific case.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's, um, there's a lot of opportunity and also I think all of us on the council understand that there is a need for all of that. Um, I think for us here in Gladstone, we're kind of working on developing, you know, first responder teams and follow-up teams to support individuals in many of those scenarios that you mentioned. And I think, um, for us, it's really important to understand the partnerships that will be working in those kinds of, um, housing situations. So i- is it my understanding that these types of properties that could potentially be these recovery homes, that they are, um, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding my words here, but that those will be continued, uh, continue to be owned by the Housing Authority or they will be sold to another group that would handle then, like you were saying, those proposals that you would be seeking, they would purchase the home for the use of their program.
That's correct. They would purchase the home for the use of their program. Um, we would, we would have varieties of, of seller financing available to us that similar, maybe analogous, if not similar to what Devin talked about with respect to, um, uh, a land trust model. So we would still sell the home at, at fair market value as required, but it would be an attractive, uh, proposition to a community based organization to own the asset. We would, we would restrict the use of the asset through a deed restriction, you know, that would, that would not allow them to go and sell it or, or, or commit it to another purpose. And we would be in an ongoing contractual relationship with the owner so that the county would contract with the owner, the new owner to provide the services that they provoke, they proposed to provide in that home and would be able to hold them accountable to the delivery of those contracted services.
Okay, awesome. That perfectly clarifies pretty much every aspect of my question, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, and I think that may have sparked some additional questions from Counselor Cook. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I know we're, I know we're really peppering you guys with questions, but, um, I think, I think it's really clear that this program overall is a net positive to the community, but I also think that, you know, we have seven households in Gladstone that, um, you know, will be displaced if this moves forward, right? So I just have a responsibility to ask, you know, a lot of questions. Um, and I, I kinda just wanted to make sure that I understood your previous answer, Devin. Um, you know, we have a hundred and forty-five sites in the whole system that are, that are, um, potentially gonna be repositioned. Um, you mentioned there's about thirty who seem to be kind of close to that process of homeownership. Um, but it does leave us with about a hundred and fifteen, the majority, who would be, you know, needing to find alternative housing. Um, for those folks, the majority who are gonna have to find alternative housing. Um, you mentioned that they would be at the top of the list. Um, but I, I just wanna understand better the environment that they would be looking for housing in. Um, so let's say they have a hard time finding suitable housing. So maybe it's not the right number of bedrooms. Maybe they can't find, um, someone who will take a voucher that's close to their work or their kid's school. Um, what is the timeline that these, these folks would be asked to leave? Will they be asked to leave before they have suitable housing, um, alternative housing lined up?
No, um, so they, they must be, um, placed in suitable housing, um, before we, you know, we can do anything with the unit. Um, to answer your question, we, about timeline, we're looking at a, a two-year process for, um, the disposition. So, you know, I think the first step, our relocation consultant and resident services team would meet individually with each household and find out, you know, what are your needs? What are your priorities? Like, you know, do you have some, you know, location preference due to school or health, you know, concern, ADA? Um, and then, you know, the relocation team goes out and, and searches for homes. Um, and so far they've been really successful, um, locating homes that are suitable.
Yeah, the timeline, understanding that helps. Thank you.
One of the thing that you didn't point out in your presentation is, uh, you talked about the existing, uh, multifamily, uh, or, uh, it, uh, complexes with about a hundred units each. But you didn't mention that you're replacing those with one new one that will have five hundred units and another that will have two hundred fifty. So you are, you're getting a huge net gain in housing opportunities, uh, with these new buildings and some of the people who may be, you know, to use that term we used before, overhoused. Uh, if you had a family that has school age children that have been living in this home for a while, the children are now grown up, maybe moving out and you have a couple that's left. They may say, we don't need a three bedroom house anymore. We'd love to live in a, in a large apartment complex and maybe they could find their housing there too. So, um, uh, uh, I, I really appreciate the questions from our counselors with the concern about, um, about people being, um, you know, losing their homes or potentially not, not finding something. But it looks like with your efforts to get an overall net gain in the number of units, uh, that the county oversees, uh, uh, we're looking for us, it creates a much stronger likelihood that, uh, people will not be, um, uh, uh, will not lose a housing opportunity. I, I've learned a lot more from this presentation tonight. This is about the third or fourth time I've, I've heard this because I watched the original presentation to the county commissioners. They had some questions, but this has been very helpful. Uh, particularly, uh, I like the broader concept of what recovery housing is. Uh, you know, we get an idea in our head, we're thinking of one thing. And, uh, Vahid, I appreciate your explanation. There could be much more than maybe what we first thought of. And, uh, and Devin, you've done a great job of, of walking us through, uh, the logic behind this and the opportunities and, and the new ways that people could be, uh, you know, uh, not just dependent on, on a system for providing their housing, but actually have some homeownership. Uh, I think it's wonderful. We're, we're trying to move with that goal. Um, and I will say one more thing about the duplex, uh, one of the homes in Gladstone. Uh, we've recently modified our code so that it's possible for a home, uh, uh, that is on, you know, one of our five thousand square foot lots or seventy-two hundred square foot lots that is a duplex to be subdivided into two separate homeownership situations. So, uh, don't think that it's not possible for people to individually own a half of a duplex if that was a choice that somebody would prefer, because in Gladstone, uh, we can make that happen, I believe. So are there any other questions from council members or anything you'd like to, uh, give us as parting information before we, uh, deliberate a little bit here? I don't see anything from counselors. Um, Vahid and Devin, thank you so much for this information. Uh, should we excuse them and then talk a little bit about the decision that we should make? Uh, is that the best way to proceed at this point?
That would be fine, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we as a city have been invited to, uh, give, provide a letter of support for this concept. And you've heard enough tonight, I think, to be pretty well informed on it. So, uh, I wanna hear what thoughts you have and, uh, what guidance we should give to staff as to whether we want to, uh, submit a letter, uh, supporting the concept of, uh, repositioning the houses that are in our community as a part of this total process. Counselor Garland.
So that was one of the things that I thought about when I read this is that although we're giving, we would be giving support, uh, as we think of it in Gladstone for seven units. We're basically giving support for the entire program and that entire program is a lot of homes. Um, wh- what, uh, regardless of whether or not they're apartments or homes or duplexes or things like that, but we are giving our support for four hundred and forty-five as opposed to just the seven in Gladstone. It is a program support and that was something that I struggled with a lot, that I was happy that you brought up the fact that there was two large apartment complexes, so to speak, that would be helping with some of this transition. One of the things I guess in hindsight I should have asked is, well, how many of these units are available for four hundred and forty-five people to move into of the ones that you had spoken about? Um, anyway, that was just something that had, that had, I had thought about when I was reading through.
Yeah, I think if you look at, at the pictures on page, uh, ten point or ten dash seven, you'll see, uh, conceptual sketches of what the new housing, uh, uh, facilities will look like. The ones that are replacing hundred unit homes with, uh, five hundred unit building. So, uh, they're, they're upgrading them and getting them, you know, mo- modernized and enlarging them. So, uh, it, it is a creation of many new, uh, many more units than we've had in the past.
Mayor, I'd also like to clarify that in the draft letter, if the council gives me the direction to draft it, it would specifically state for the scattered sites section, eighteen disposition application and reference the seven sites in Gladstone. So there would not be a broader statement as what Counselor Garland referred to. This would be Gladstone specific with, with those seven properties for scattered sites, letter of support.
I think that that's wise. I think that there are a lot of people, uh, from what I've heard that are not all too pleased with the fact that they're putting five hundred units in a spot where it's previously only been a hundred units. There's very limited access on that primary road there, thirty-second. So I think keeping that language specific to Gladstone is certainly my preference. So thank you, City Administrator.
Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, my question would just be, um, so it sounded to me, I just listened to the whole presentation and it sounded to me like once we support this, and even if we're just specific to the seven houses here, that the county can choose to make these, uh, you know, we've already seen what happened with the Quilla Springs. I mean, you know, the beginning of it and now we had to do. It sounded like they could make all seven of these houses if they wanted to or chose to. They can make them recovery houses or Oxford houses or sort of do or put whatever they want in these seven homes in Gladstone. Is that the case? I mean, would people lose their housing? Like if you lived there and then they got them a voucher and they got them somewhere else and they say, okay, well now we'll use this one in Gladstone for an Oxford house. Or this one can be a recovery house. Or are people gonna, are families and people gonna live there?
Well, they only referenced within Gladstone, how many of them met the age requirement, uh, which the people who wanted to make them available for uh, purchase, uh, home purchase.
And that was only.
And that was six out of seven would be potentially, uh, more likely to be used for that purpose. Uh, and I think that included the one that is a duplex. And because, because the duplex, they talked about how it might be more suited for recovery, uh, just because there might be a need to have two separate units, uh, in, in one site. Um, but, uh, you're right, potentially, if the county decides, uh, they would be now, what we would do locally, if, uh, if someone were to buy a piece of property with the intent of creating a recovery home, there are processes that we go through with the local level through the planning department, uh, to get approval for something that essentially changes the function. And, and it does involve notifying neighbors and, uh, community hearings and that sort of thing. So I think that would be part of the process. But what I was hearing tonight from county staff is that those, we have a lot of good candidates for purchase, for repurchase, perhaps under a community land trust model. And these homes which have been owned by the county and therefore are not paying property taxes would, could potentially in the future be owned by a nonprofit organization, be back on the tax rolls and provide housing locally.
Housing, okay.
Other comments, questions?
I just wanted to say, Greg.
Yes.
I think one of the clarifications too that they, um, that Vahid had made is that in order for that to become any kind of a, an Oxford house, a, a help, a hospice or a medical respite program, how, it would have to be sold to a program or an entity that wanted to open it up that way. That Clackamas County is basically trying to move out of having any of those units under their umbrella. Am I saying that correct?
I think that's correct. We, um, we used to use the expression that the Clackamas County wanted to get out of the library business, you know, and there was talk about. And, and I think they want to get out of the business of, of having to own and operate these homes, uh, and they look to the nonprofits who qualify for some of the supportive housing aid and other things, uh, and have the expertise to do that. Uh, and they are, you know, their county staff that we heard from tonight, which are very skilled in this, this is one of the strongest, uh, staff programs they have at the county level, are skilled at making this happen, of, of making those connections between the properties and the individuals who are gonna make them, uh, you know, make these things work. So, uh, uh, and, and putting those supportive housing dollars to good use as, uh, as Ginger mentioned earlier tonight, the, the funds that went toward our, uh, uh, local food pantry here in Gladstone. Uh, and some similar funds went to other cities who had needs to help them in their support of people who, uh, maybe weren't actually homeless but were, could be on the verge of homelessness were it not for these supportive programs. And, and they're making those, those dollars work effectively through, uh, rental assistance and vouchers and other things that keep people housed, keep them from being displaced. Uh, Counselor Cook, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, just a, just a comment. Um, I think it's clear from the presentation that, um, this would increase both the quantity and, um, it seems like the quality of, um, housing available, affordable housing available. Um, I think my questions and my concerns were just around the seven Gladstone house- households that would be displaced. Um, and I think they adequately answered those questions. Um, so I think this is something that, um, I would prefer for us to support.
Would anyone like to make a motion, uh, regarding, uh, one or the other of the options that are on page ten dash two of this item of the agenda?
I'll make the motion. I motion that the city council direct the city administrator to draft a letter of support of the scattered sites section eighteen disposition application as proposed by the Housing Authority of Clackamas County.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Rieckel. Any further discussion? Are we ready to take a vote? Tammy, would you like to call the roll?
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously, so we will direct, uh, our administrator to draft such a letter. Thank you very much for all of you for being a part of this discussion. Um, you know, we like to do our share in, in helping the county provide housing. do our share in, in helping the county provide housing. And, and we don't do it ourselves usually at the local level. It comes from, from a different level of government or from nonprofits that specialize. And it's great that I think that we have this opportunity to work with the people who have the experience and the know-how to make it happen in our community. So thank you very much. All right. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a resolution proclaiming April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the city of Gladstone. Jackie, will you present for us, please?
I'd be happy to. So as you know, one of the city council adopted goals is to become a Tree City USA. We held our first ad hoc tree board meeting last Friday. The next step is for the city council to pass a proclamation or a resolution. So we drafted both. You're gonna pass a resolution proclaiming Arbor Day is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. There's a little bit of background in the resolution. That language came from the state itself in a proclamation. And basically what we're trying to acknowledge is that the Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park are the entity that has created the Gladstone Arbor Day Plant Cell Event. So that is referenced in the resolution. And if the city council would like to approve this, then this will become part of our application for the Tree City USA.
All right, any questions? Councilor Roberts.
Does this, I should have asked earlier, but does this require annual proclamation going forward?
Yes, if we're going to apply annually to be a Tree City, it will require an annual resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilor Garland.
Just because I honestly do not know. Does it, does, does the part of the Tree City with the annual proclamation require us to plant a tree once a year? Or I'm just curious, if you don't have that information, I.
It just encourages.
Okay.
Tree planting. I think what we are doing is above and beyond this year. And it's very exciting for the city council to be part of that. But it encourages tree plantings. And part of what we're trying to accomplish in Gladstone is to first get a public ordinance in place before we encourage people just to go plant trees wherever. So we're, we're on the right path.
Thank you.
So a future Arbor Day event might include just an emphasis within the city on private property owners or the city itself planting trees in other locations.
That's correct.
Okay, so good. All right, is there, would someone like to make a motion regarding this item?
Oh. Yeah, no, I, I'll make the motion. I just was gonna say, I just was coming through Westland, leaving church the other day. And it was, there's a big sign going down Borland Road that says, welcome to Westland, Tree City USA. Twenty-five years they've been part of the Tree City.
Yeah, we're, we're really late getting on board with this. We've been, we've been shamed into this by some of our citizens, I will have to say. But it's very exciting because people are very interested in it right now. And the climate change situation and some of the events recently that involved trees being damaged through ice storms and disease has, has made us have to relook at this entire thing. So it's a very good time to be getting into it and to be getting that support from the forestry division of the state.
It is.
Because we, we will go into it with eyes wide open and consider things. And some of those cities that have been involved for twenty-five years may have policies that have been around for twenty-five.
Go to them too.
And, and so we can look at theirs and we can consider our own, so.
I like that. So I would, if it's okay, I would make the motion that the city council choose to approve the resolution proclaiming April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Alexander and seconded by Councilor Huckabee. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Roberts.
Yes.
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Councilor Rieckel.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. And we move on to the next item, spending some of our money on infrastructure. Steph, will you present for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, Public Works Director Cana Peroli is very busy right now. What we are most excited about is the number of bids that came in for this work to be completed. So he's gonna give you a brief overview of who bid on the contracts, what it came in at, and who we'd like you to award it to.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In September of twenty twenty-three, City Council adopted a pavement condition index, also known as a PCI of seventy-one and made the commitment to invest in improving Gladstone's roadways. Part of improving the roadways is identifying streets that need more significant work, such as grinds and inlays. During the recent road rating process, road, roadways were identified for the next several years of pavement management, allowing the city to maximize their capital investment. This project will assist the city in maintaining its commitment to a PCI of seventy-one. The conclusion of the city's RFP process garnered six proposals. The lowest bid received was from KNL Industries, Inc. with a low bid of seven hundred, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and eighty cents. Staff recommends adding a ten percent contingency, which would be seventy-six thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents for a total amount not to exceed eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. This, all proposals that we received for this project were under-engineered bid, which was over a million dollars for the entire project. So the low bid obviously was below, but even our high bid was below the engineered estimate for that. So we have a couple of options. Option one would be to approve the, the award of bid for public improvement contract between the city of Gladstone and KNL Industries, for the total contract amount not to exceed eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, which includes a ten percent contingency to complete the twenty twenty-four paving project. Option two would be, do not approve the award of bid of the public improvement contract between the city of Gladstone and KNL Industries to complete the twenty twenty-four paving project. Steph, and staff recommends awarding the, approving the award of bid to the public improvement contract to KNL Industries for a total contract amount not to exceed eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents to complete the twenty twenty-four paving project.
All right, thank you for that recommendation. And just to help remind us, because I had this question earlier in the week, this is the first of five years that we're going to be doing a project of, of this magnitude, similar cost in the nine hundred to thousand dollar range approximately.
Yeah, that is correct. So with the PCI of seventy-one, that bumped our, what I think our current PCI, PCI was, was a sixty-eight. This bunts it up to a seventy-one. That commitment was gonna be nine, nine hundred, around nine hundred thousand dollars a year. That also includes slurry seals, which will be coming at a later date to you. But, so that'll be slurry seals and paving.
Okay, and the streets that are listed on this then are just the first batch that we're doing during this year's, under this bid. But there will be other streets in other parts of the city that would be addressed in future years.
That is correct.
Okay, so just so the public is aware, if, if your street was not on this list, it doesn't mean it might not be on the list at some point in the future.
Yeah, and so the pavement management program, it selects the streets based off of conditions and where it falls to be able to achieve that seventy-one PCI. It's not something that, that staff does or anything like that. It's a program that does that for us.
Very good. All right, we've, we approved a couple of these at a recent meeting. We're getting good at it. Councilor Alexander, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, you've covered most of it. I just was wondering, so with, with the way costs go up and things. So in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, will it be eight streets every time? Or will it be sometime maybe only six because of the cost? Or if we find a little more in the budget, would it be ten? I mean.
It, it depends on the type of treatment that's needed.
Oh.
When you're talking the roads like Webster Road and Oakfield Road, where that's a, a two-inch grind and inlay, that's a lot more expensive than some of the residential streets that are being done with us. So realistically, depending on the arterials and stuff like that, you could end up with more roads instead of less.
Good.
So we're, we're starting with a couple of the big ones then, with Webster and Oakfield, getting a good, some good sections of those treated this time.
That is correct, yes.
Councilor Rieckel, I see your hand.
Yeah, just have to ask because my parents will be mad if I don't. On the Webster Road, where it says Webster Road from Caseon Drive to City Limits, where approximately is the city limit there? Is it right before Strawberry Lane-ish area or is it closer?
It's, it's closer, it's closer into Gladstone. I'm not sure the exact, the exact footage. But I believe the last major street on there, on Webster there is Spring Hill. So it's, it's beyond that, but I want to say by maybe a couple hundred feet or maybe a five hundred feet, something like that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Uh, Councilor Garland.
Could staff please just make a comment about recusing ourselves or not recusing ourselves based on where these projects are being done?
Well, I would just say that none of you knew what was going to be in the bid package when we went out because it is all computerized and calculated. And it's also based on how contractors are able to move within certain areas as well. So none of you, I believe, had to recuse yourself. But I also wanted to claim that none of you really knew what was going to be in the bid package for this process. Because a lot of you live on streets that need help as well. So I appreciate you bringing that up, but you guys don't get to choose what goes in the bid package for the paving contract.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Councilor Garland, for bringing that up. Uh, Attorney Jacobs, do you want to comment on that as well? I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I agree with everything City Administrator Betts just said. I will say though, if out of an abundance of caution, if you live on a street that's being repaved, so it's gonna be paving right in front of your house, you could declare a potential conflict of interest just to make sure that you're covering your bases out of an abundance of caution. So I, I would recommend you do that. You know, if there's no, if, if you're over disclosing, there's no problem with that. If you fail to disclose a potential conflict, then you can have problems. So I would recommend you, if you live on a street that's being paved and it's paving in front of your property, just declare the potential conflict. After that, you can still go ahead and participate.
Thank you. Does that apply to anyone here? Councilor Garlington?
I will say that I have a potential as I have a front street and a backyard street. And my backyard street is that Oakfield Road.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Roberts, did you?
Yes, first streets included.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Cook, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, although I was listening so hard, I almost forgot it. So just a, just a note for Mr. Cana Peroli. I think, you know, I think that the pavement management plan that we have is excellent. I think it's modern. I think it's reflects thorough understanding of how to be efficient with limited funding. But it's not very intuitive. I think, you know, we, when we first adopted the pavement management plan, I think we, you know, did a social media post just letting folks know, you know, hey, you know, you're gonna see us applying treatments to roads that look okay to an untrained eye. And then we're not addressing, you know, roads that have failed and have potholes and are really, you know, looking kind of debilitated. So, debilitated, dilapidated, getting late. Um, so I, I think it may be helpful for Public Works to maybe, you know, take this as another opportunity to educate the public about why we're approaching pavement management in the way that we are and about how, you know, this is the way to really get the maximum bang for our buck. Because it's not intuitive and I continue to hear my neighbors concerned.
Mr. Cana Peroli, would you like to address that?
No, I, I think that, you know, Councilor Cook, I think you're correct. I know when we first put that out, when we adopted the seventy-one PCI, we did put some stuff out on that. We have put our projects for this summer in, in the newsletter that's coming out or just came out, actually. But yeah, we can definitely put some stuff out there on social and, and things like that to help, you know, clarify some of those issues. And trust me, we do get a lot of phone calls, especially when the projects went out in the newsletter. We get phone calls all the time. We get phone calls constantly from some of the streets that don't get treatments and stuff like that, and we have to deal with those. And I mean, we explain to them, you know, how, how the pavement management works. But, you know, they still want their street paved, no matter what you do, so.
What we generally haven't done is, is given them what the other option would be for getting pavement done on, on a dilapidated street, which would be to assess the homeowners themselves and they would, they would help pay the cost. So, but what we're trying to do as a city is to follow this, I say, I, I agree, sort of counterintuitive position of maintaining a high average so that the majority of the streets around the city are well-maintained. And that improves the driving and, and the commuting everywhere in the city to the best that our budget can manage. But thank you for bringing that up. And thank you, Mr. Cana Peroli and your staff for dealing with and responding to those questions that come from the community. I get them too. All right, are we ready to hear a motion and take a vote on this?
Sure. I move to approve a public improvement contract between the city of Gladstone and KNL Industries Incorporated for a total contract amount not to exceed eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents to complete the twenty twenty-four paving project.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Roberts, seconded by Councilor Alexander. The list of streets are on there and we've had an indication from both Councilor Roberts and Councilor Garlington that they have a potential conflict of interest because it, it does, this does involve streets close to where they live. And that having been declared, you are able to vote on this and participate in it. But with, on the advice of our attorney, that declaration is helpful to this, to the transparency of this process. So Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Roberts.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Councilor Rieckel.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the contract is approved. Thank you. Next item, we have some housekeeping to do with regard to our Gladstone Municipal Code. Administrator Betts, can you tell us about it?
Actually, I'm gonna have City Attorney Jacobs tell you about it.
Very good.
Thanks for keeping me awake, Jackie. Good morning, good, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So as the mayor just introduced, this is a housekeeping ordinance. As you likely know, city staff, as, as capacity and time permits, will review various sections of the municipal code to make sure it's updated and consistent with current practices or current laws. You may recall that we did something similar after the new charter passed and we reviewed the code and did an audit of the code and updated the code to make sure it was in conformance with the new charter. So this ordinance is something very similar. Basically what it is, it's an ordinance that's updating language in the code to reflect some of the changes that have occurred over the past several years. For example, because we are now receiving library and fire services through intergovernmental agreements with other governmental entities, we're updating the code language to reflect that as opposed to making them appear that they continue to be city departments. We're also updating the code to better reflect the changes and titles of various positions within the cities related to department heads, such as the Public Works Director and the Community Services Manager. So again, it's really just a housekeeping matter. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. But with that, we would recommend that you approve this ordinance to update the code to reflect current practices.
Okay, you've all had an opportunity to review this. Did any of you have any questions? Anything that was unclear? I don't see hands raised on the screen either. I think we are ready for a motion and a vote.
I would motion to adopt ordinance fifteen thirty as presented by city staff.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Roberts, seconded by Councilor Huckabee. This is an ordinance, so if it is approved unanimously, then it will be in effect. Very good. And the, the full wording of it is on page thirteen. Very good. And um, the, the, the full wording of it is on page thirteen dash two, but it covers several sections within our city code. All right, any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel?
Yes.
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Chad, for that help and for the work of your staff and putting this together. And, and I understand we've got another one that'll be coming for you in a couple of months because we, we find these little things now and then. But uh, we depend on your help. Thank you.
And Mayor, I appreciate the gratitude, but uh, most of that should be directed to uh, Tammy Bannack. She did the bulk of the work on this.
Tammy Bannack, thank you so much. All right, we have another um, resolution coming before us. Uh, well, an IGA really that we are required to adopt. We could have included this in our consent agenda, but we wanted it out front uh, with a little bit of discussion and staff explanation, uh, just to help the community uh, be aware of what's going on. So uh, Administrator Bets, if you would, please.
Sure, so there's strength in numbers. The City of Gladstone belongs to a consortium of the regional water providers. We pay a membership to them to speak on our behalf in other cities in the metro area. And they went through a process this past year of updating their intergovernmental agreement, which I don't think has been done since two thousand and five. We tried to highlight some summary of changes in the staff report to show you uh, what was changed. We do not have an elected official who sits on the governing board of this consortium. However, we do have a staff member, Justin Poyser, who is in the Public Works Department as our utility manager, who is on the, the technical advisory group for this. We included a redlined version in your packet, so you can see the amount of work that went into this the past year. The consortium has asked that each entity bring it before its governing body and approve it. And like the mayor said, this probably could have gone on the consent agenda. But being since this is the first time with a new council and having this um, intergovernmental agreement, we wanted to make sure we were able to talk about it a little bit. So if you have any questions about the summary of changes, we'd be happy to address them. Otherwise, it is a pretty straightforward amended and restated intergovernmental agreement.
Any questions?
Who makes up the governing board? City Administrator Bets?
I believe, excuse me, I believe that are, those are uh, individuals from different water suppliers throughout the, the Portland metro area.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say that I'm grateful uh, that staff member Justin Poyser is involved in this. He represents us in a couple of uh, uh, these kinds of things and represents the city very well with his experience and knowledge of our needs and a willingness to work with others uh, who, who have similar needs. So um, you know, it could have been an elected representative, but I'm, I'm, as, as speaking as one, I'm glad it's not me. I'm glad it's him. He, he does a great job. All right?
I just had one.
Yes.
And I, I think I addressed this earlier with Jack, but um, okay, on the back page fourteen thirty-four. There, I didn't see Gladstone's name in there, but so what are they gonna do? They're gonna just, it, it's easier to make, how are they, how are we gonna know the participants? Is that gonna be in the new agreement? Is that gonna be?
Well, I think they decided to take them out of the agreement because it, it changes so much that you would constantly have to keep changing the agreement.
So just being updated if you want.
Yes, they will, they will have a list of membership through the consortium on that. And I don't believe that Gladstone was on here back when this first originally started, which is why we're not listed in the back.
All right, that's all I wanted to know.
All right, do we have um, let's see, would someone like to make a motion based on the staff recommendation on page fourteen dash two?
I will. I make a motion to approve the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement of Regional Water Providers Consortium.
I second.
All right, it's been moved by Counsel Huckabee and seconded by Counsel Alexander. Any additional discussion, questions, comments? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, uh, the motion passes unanimously. We move on to item fifteen, which is another intergovernmental agreement. Um, and uh, let's see, I think Administrator Bets, you'll be speaking for the Police Department and the Public Works Department and the city on this one as well.
Sure, and how this originated is that our police chief attends emergency management meetings with Clackamas County. And if one of those meetings, Clackamas County brought forth an intergovernmental agreement uh, that had to do with debris removal and disposal during emergency declaration. And I think that this is another tool for cities. If we have another catastrophe event that would require their services to come and help us remove our debris and we could use them. Darren and John and I have discussed, it's not likely that we will use them, but we certainly, just like we adopted an ordinance to or an agreement to share employees, if we're displaced, we'd like to have this agreement in place in case the city needed to solicit their services. I think Gladstone did an excellent job when we had the storm event where we had to open Meldrum Bar Park and have a location for our debris. At that time, Gladstone Disposal came in because it was part of our franchise. We've since changed our franchise, so if we use Gladstone Disposal now, we would have to pay for that. So we would be able to compare costs with Clackamas County to have them come in versus Gladstone Disposal. I included uh, some question and answers in the staff report. Uh, the Public Works Director and Police Chief and I all agree that there's nothing but positive in having this extra tool for the City of Gladstone. So we are recommending that you allow me to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County.
All right, any questions from council members? Counselor Roberts?
I think I'd be stealing Counsel Alexander's words here if I said it, but this is a no-brainer.
And I just had one question about it. It's a no-brainer, but uh, it's, so I went to page fifteen dash five and the, and uh, under five, city district and obligations. And it just, there's just, I just was wanting clarification. Provide a field liaison to identify FEMA reimbursement eligible work for the county's disaster debris monitoring. And I just wanted to make sure that's you. That would be you, correct, Darren?
Oh, yes, of course.
You would be our guy, right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, that's, that's all I wanted to make sure.
All right, uh, who's willing to add this tool to our tool belt? Uh, who would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone for debris removal and disposal during an emergency declaration.
And I will second.
All right, moved by Counsel Huckabee, seconded by Counsel Alexander. Any further discussion?
No brainer.
Seeing none. Well, we don't want to prejudice anyone on this, but uh, let's, let's take a poll on this no-brainer motion.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes, no brainer.
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes, no brainer.
Counselor Cook?
No brainer, yes.
Counselor Rieckel?
Also no brainer, yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Of course, no brainer.
Mayor Milch?
I am in favor of anything that's just working effectively together with other county agencies and cities. And so I'm, I'm in favor of this as well. I vote yes, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, we have um, business carried forward, just some updates on a couple of things from uh, Administrator Bets.
Yeah, so the first one, I just wanted to provide a brief update on our diversity, equity, inclusion, engagement and planning. In the packet, you can see that we've been doing quite a bit of work to outline some of the uh, events that we would like to highlight this year and provided you an overview of how we intend to use social media, the website, our newsletter, uh, the community center and also seeking out our partners for community engagement. I want to credit Marcy Jory and Michelle Pruso because they're the ones that got together and put together this list of essential days and events for twenty twenty-four. We certainly are open to new and any other suggestions if the city council has that. And we look at this as a living document where each year, we just want to build upon what we're learning that the community would like us to focus on. And so there's no action required. I just wanted to give you an update and make sure that you had a copy of what we plan on celebrating through uh, the rest of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much to you and, and other staff for putting this together and providing it for us. Are there any questions or comments, uh, Counsel Huckabee?
Uh, no questions. Just thank you for all the work that's been put into this um, by Marcy and um, Michelle. This is fabulous and I love to see it and I can't wait to see who might um, submit an application for our community, what's the proper name for that, community?
We have a community scholarship application right now where groups or organizations can apply for up to twenty-five hundred dollars matching funds to create a event in Gladstone. I will say that some of the events that Bob Everett mentioned tonight, they're in the process of being reviewed. So that's why you hadn't heard about them from me because the city hasn't officially approved the applications. But I didn't want to speak negatively because I don't think there's gonna be any issues with those events. Um, and we have had, I believe, four applications for the community scholarship fund and we're, or for the application and we're hoping that we're going to get more for that.
Thank you. I lost my words for a moment. I appreciate your backup there.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for this report.
And I think, Mayor, I'm gonna let you do the next one.
On the city-led initiatives?
Yeah.
Okay, we uh, you know, a while back, uh, you probably read that uh, Metro has made available funds to the three counties in the metro area uh, for um, uh, supportive housing services. And it's been in the news that uh, some people think the counties haven't spent that money quickly enough and done as much as they could. Uh, but it's because the counties are really wanting to plan some things out in the future and do things in an effective way and make that money last and uh, give it to pro- pro- projects that will have a lasting effect on their communities. And so um, not long ago, they put out an opportunity for us to uh, for cities to indicate projects that they think would benefit from application of those funds in their community. And here in Gladstone, uh, the City of Gladstone and the school district, Gladstone School District got together and decided we would submit an application for uh, continuing funding and additional supportive funding for the food pantry uh, that is operated by the school district with cooperation from the Oregon Food Pan- Oregon Food Bank and uh, under the leadership of Northwest Family Services. So um, people at various levels of those uh, got in, got involved preparing application. Um, Northwest Family Services provided a budget for a three-year period. We submitted it. And uh, it was one of the many projects considered by the county and it was approved in full. So we uh, will be receiving two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars uh, of uh, uh, three, for three years of operational funds to help sustain and grow the food pantry. Uh, much of that is for Alex Van Pelt, our staff person, who uh, works technically as a staff member, I believe, of Northwest Family Services. I'm not sure exactly how the relationship is. But um, uh, her leadership and coordination is really the strength of that. We have a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of sources for food. What we really need is the administrative structure that maintains that program. And now we have secured funding. Uh, this is something that uh, not only feeds people who uh, may be currently in a, in a homeless situation or a very precarious situation, but also supports families in our community who uh, perhaps would have very diff- great difficulty paying their rent and paying their medical bills and other things if they did not have support with their food budget. Uh, it provides uh, food that goes home to students within the school system. It provides meals uh, to people at Tuck Willa Springs and at the community center, some of our senior adults in the community who are in need. So it, it's a program that serves a, a broad spectrum of need in our community. And uh, I am grateful to the county for coming up with this uh, innovative, innovative ways for cities to direct projects of their own and to qualify for those funds. And I'm glad that they approved this. So uh, we'll be putting the word out, but it, it is effective July first. You remember a year ago, we um, allocated some funds to help the, the food pantry stay uh, alive and functioning through the end of this fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. So we're hoping that uh, there will be a smooth transition with the new funds and things will operate uh, very well. Uh, I know a lot of you volunteer from time to time and some of you, and many of you came to a fundraiser that we had for the food pantry uh, a couple of months ago. So it's a well-loved program in this community and I'm glad that the county recognizes too how important it is to us. So that's just information and update on that for everyone. Yes, Counsel Garland?
Question, who, who is uh, managing the funds?
The funds will go directly to Northwest Family Services. It's the nonprofit that, that runs it. So rather than the county giving monies to cities, there was a little bit of, they didn't want to have that entanglement quite. So uh, in this case, it'll be something that'll go directly to the nonprofit that does the work. Okay?
Counselor Rieckel has her hand up.
Counselor Rieckel?
I just wanted to just express my excitement and my happiness that this has come through. I'm sorry, I get a little emotional sometimes. Anyway, very, very pleased and a huge thank you to Candy Tracy uh, for coordinating that fundraising event at High Rocks a couple of months back. Fantastic. So just good, happy feels all the way around. Thank you.
It's really nice when it, when the, you know, you really feel you have the support of the community by doing something like that too, so. Very good. So that's, that's it. As far as business carried forward, uh, did we have anyone to request to speak as business from the audience?
We did not receive any requests.
All right. Um, so we are up to business from the council. Um, let me see, I'll start at the far right end and move my way down to my left. So Counselor Huckabee, you may begin.
Um, I actually do not have many updates um, tonight, but I just want to echo Counselor Rieckel and um, big, give a, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words tonight. Um, a big shout out and kudos to um, Candy Tracy and Morna Barnes for putting on that fundraiser. I believe if my numbers are correct, it brought in about a thousand dollars and several hundred pounds of food for the food bank or the, for the food pantry, I'm sorry. So shout out to them and it is really nice when we see such um, active community support for um, our resources. It was fun. It was so much fun, yes.
All right, Counsel Alexander.
Okay, I don't usually have this much, but um, I want, just hope to see everyone at the Arbor Day tree planting sale. Um, uh, there's still spots to sign up to help at the city tent. I signed up for nine o'clock. I think you're right after me. Yeah, and then uh, and then on April twenty-fourth, one PM Gladstone Community Center, um, you can partner with Saul for a community trash pickup. Um, under noteworthy highlights in the department heads, in the department head monthly report. Very glad to see our Gladstone Police Department got a really bad guy off the streets for a long time. And um, anyone who wants to get involved in keeping the community clean can go to adoptoneblock.org and see what they have to offer. That'll be the people you see walking around with the bucket.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great program. You see those signs and you know that people are out there keeping their place clean. I appreciate it. Counselor Rieckel, did you have anything for us tonight?
I do. I attended the Parks Board meeting last night, tons of stuff. I will keep it short and sweet and say that um, they are doing some fantastic work. Um, kind of focusing on some new projects across the city. Um, so it's gonna be really exciting to see which direction they go and how, how they kind of develop these ideas and plans. Um, couple of things of note, um, one of their members, Eric, is One of their members, Eric, is on the Ad Hoc Tree Committee and he kind of, I know that since we're talking about Tree City USA, that they kind of were talking about a couple of things that are really interesting as far as, they're kind of like developing their plan at this point, but looking at developing a tree or a street tree code and a recommended species list so that homeowners and businesses, you know, as they move forward with planting more trees within the community, there's going to be support there. They're going to do, looking at building a community outreach program for tree care for our residents, which is pretty cool. And then also possibly down the line, looking at doing a heritage tree program. But that does take, you know, some time and research that they will kind of focus on that. They also approved the purchase of the Arbor Day plaque for the community tree for the Arbor Day event that's coming up. And then last thing that I'll talk about, everybody's talked about the Arbor Day event on April 27th, 92, just going to reiterate that. We also have an event at Cross Park that is from the clackamasriver.org. So if you want information and you want to sign up to volunteer for this event, it's, uh, you would go to the website clackamasriver.org. April 20th, 9:00 AM to noon, they're going to be hosting a big cleanup at Cross Park to help deal with invasive species and support of native plantings that have been done down there. It's going to be a great event. So if you can participate, that would be fantastic. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Eichel. Counselor Cook?
Sorry, can I interject real fast?
Oh, yes.
Um, Counselor Eichel, what was that date for the Clackamas River project? I'm sorry.
Thank you for asking. It's the 20th, April 20th, 9:00 AM to noon. And Eric said that if you want to volunteer, it's best to sign up and get the information from that website. So one more time, it's clackamasriver.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now Counselor Cook.
All right. I don't have very much. I just want to appreciate all of the volunteers and city employees who made Easter happen. As the parent of two young children, that is a highlight of spring. My kids loved it. It was delightful. The Easter Bunny did a particularly good job this year. I don't know if anyone noticed. What a fantastic job our Easter Bunny did. So really just a delightful experience all around. I, it makes me so happy and proud to be from Gladstone events like that. Really just bring the whole community together. And then I'm excited to hear about this year, what's coming up. Some movies in the park. The Gladstone Community Festival, the Arbor Day Plant Sale at Gladstone Nature Park. Super excited for all of those. Um, I'm going to publicly shame myself. Counselor Garlington, I have to apologize. I'm not going to be able to make it to the Arbor Day Sale. I'm going to have to send a, um, a neighbor with some cash to get some natives for me. But, uh, they foolishly scheduled, uh, Independent Bookstore Day on the same day as Arbor Day Plant Sale. So it's one of the biggest holidays in the book selling world and I will unfortunately not be able to go. But my heart will be at Gladstone Nature Park that day. There's another cool community event I want to let everybody know about. As the business liaison, I'm excited to tell you that Watts Heating and Cooling is celebrating 25 years of operation in our community. They're having a party on April 30th. They're going to have foods, food and drink and all kinds of fun stuff. I'm really excited. They're going to be talking to folks about working in the trades. So if you know someone, a young person, a person of any age who might be interested in a career in the trades, it would be a great event to go learn some more about that. And that's what I got.
And just to clarify, that is a ribbon cutting ceremony at their new location, which is no longer in the city of Gladstone, but they still own property here in the city and they have served many, many families in this community. And, and, uh, and Mr. Cook himself, uh, Mr. Cook, that's you, Mr. Watts himself, contributes a lot of support to community activities in Gladstone as well and always has. All right, Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Much like Counselor Cook, I just want to say thank you to the city of Gladstone, Haley specifically for hosting that Easter egg hunt. Just a terrific opportunity to get out, interact with the community, see them out there. Just the amount of people every year. And thankfully we were blessed with wonderful weather and so just, uh, just a fabulous time. I don't often bring back reports from the Water Commission, but I thought I would touch on a couple of things this evening. It is really well managed and it's for that reason that I don't often bring back a lot of news. But the leadership there allows each city's investment to really, really be capitalized, utilized to the best of its ability. And so each year we're putting close to or over a million dollars into plant reserves that will later be spent on capital projects that are clearly outlined many, many years in advance. And so I know Wade previously, uh, kind of explained how that plant works. But there are four slow sand filtration beds outside. And then there's a membrane facility inside where basically water is pulled through a vacuum or pulled through these little tiny membrane fibers smaller than a hair. And that vacuum pulls the water through and with only a touch of chlorine after that, it's good to go out. Whereas the slow sand, there's very little chemical work that has to be done to that, but it just slowly seeps through these sand beds outside. So it's, it's very fascinating. I explained it very poorly. Wade does it well. But that sand is extremely expensive and niche. You can only get it from one supplier in the state of Oregon. That's Knife River. Somewhere down in Salem or Albany or something to that effect. And when we were going out to resand those beds, they said, sure, it'll be $325 a ton. That was ridiculous because that came out to millions and millions of dollars. And we said, no way we're paying that because it shouldn't cost that much. But there were many other cities that were going out at the same time. And because they have a monopoly on it, they said, well, this is what we're charging. So the commission is actually going out to license another organization to do that same process for us. And we were able to drive down their price through a lot, a lot of tough negotiations, Wade likes to put it, to $175 a ton. So we bought half of the sand we need. So instead of resanding the entire bed, we sanded two beds halfway. And what this will allow us to do is stagger when we fill them. So instead of reaching, it's 10 or 15 years, the lifespan on them, I think about 10 years. Instead of reaching that in all four beds simultaneously, we'll reach that on an alternating year. So every five years we'll resand two beds. So, and I could keep going on and on and on, but the commission is very, very well managed. I have to do very little work sitting on that board, uh, but the entire city reached the rewards of it. And so I'm very thankful to be a part of that organization and can answer any other questions. Go ahead.
So did you, can they go out? Does it have to be from the state of Oregon? I mean, did you guys look like in Vancouver or anything? Did they sell that sand over there at another facility or?
It's just the special licensing.
Oh, the light, you have to, it doesn't matter where it comes from.
Yeah.
The licensing to get that. Oh, okay. I was saying, okay.
And so the sand that company A makes might be the exact same sand that Knife River makes. But if they don't have that specific licensure, we can't buy it due to federal regulations, state regulations and. And, uh, oh, and the leak recovery, along with more commission notes. The work that Public Works has done in our city has significantly over the years reduced the amount of water that we lose, clean water that they send to us that we are able to just pump right into homes and we don't lose somewhere in that process. It used to be much more. And so the, due to the works of public effort, we are losing a lot less water, which is saving everyone money.
I like that.
It's good stuff.
Counselor Garland.
Okay. Well, I hate to brag, but I did get my photo taken with the Easter Bunny. So, oh, Greg did too. Okay. Oh. But I thought that was overall a fabulous event. And when I got the video and watched it, I will have to say I chuckled a little bit because you could see Haley in that bright orange sweatshirt all in the video. So I, you always knew where she was. Just a great job all, all around. It was, and the fact that so many people show up, you know, although we were blessed with some quick, great weather, uh, I think that just the numbers of people that show up speaks volumes about us as a community. So. And then I, I want to say about the Arbor Day event, something that Nancy had touched on too, that there is a barrel there for food collection for our food pantry. So the more that people can collect, you know, if we're out with our neighbors this week and say, hey, you may not be going to the plant sale, but I could certainly take a can or two for you to, you know, to add to the barrel. That would be great. And then can we put that Cross Park and that Clackamas River org on our website for people to click on if they have a chance, if you get a chance?
Yeah, I think we learned about it today, um, out of the Parks Board meeting last night. It's part of Earth Day, I believe. And so yes, we will put that on our events.
Okay, super, super. Um, that's all. Thank you Gladstone staff for everything you do.
Just to piggyback a little on what Counsel Roberts reported, uh, I also serve as one of the elected officials on the Advisory Committee for the Water Environmental Services. And they also do an amazing job of managing the money and managing the long-term capital improvements needed to, to do the, their aspect of, uh, water in, in water treatment. And what was the feedback we got from them this week about Gladstone?
It was in response to my weekly report. It was the executive director that said Gladstone is killing it with their infrastructure. And so that was a fantastic compliment that I shared with our Public Works Director at Management Meeting today.
So they are supporting us with part of the cost of doing the infiltration and infill mitigation project that we have. And, uh, you know, we're working against one of, again, one of those things where we have a good partnership and good support from people with the, the proper resources and, uh, and so, uh, it, it's nice to be a part of that too. And, and I go away with much the same feelings that these folks really know what they're doing. I'm lucky to be there and just witness it and learn from.
Yeah. It is the case that they do not want to raise rates if they don't have to. Unfortunately, uh, and it's, it's the same case with Wes, I know, but with the PGE rate increases coming out, what the commission does will feel that more substantially than the estimated rate increases. However, due to long-term, uh, financial planning and wise spending, that won't be passed on to the consumers individually. And so I hope it's the same case with Wes, but that, that is what we're dealing with. And so we're in a very fortunate position.
Good to know. So, uh, I continue to represent our city on a couple of the C4 committees. We look at issues related to, uh, the cities within the metro region, with upgrading our position on tolling and what the future that will be. Normally, uh, C4 meets on, well, normally the Clackamas County's Association Dinner is on the fourth Thursday of the month and would have been on the fourth Thursday of April this month, except that coincides with, uh, the League of Oregon Cities Convention, which, uh, Counsel Garlington will represent our community at. So thank you for keeping up on those issues. And, uh, because they moved the Clackamas County Dinner to the first week in May, and I'm planning to attend that, uh, Counselor Garlington will attend C4, which normally meets that night. So we're, all the bases are covered. We work, we work as a team.
Got it.
We, we try to continue to be represented, uh, uh, in all these groups that, where we coordinate our efforts and really work together. And, um, we didn't talk about what the other cities got out of those monies from supportive housing services. But there were five million, seven million altogether, I think, allocated, five million within the metro, a couple of million more outside the metro area. Variety of things that cities in the county benefited from, uh, from this program. And so, um, you know, we should be grateful to, uh, our own city and staff for what we're able to accomplish here and for the, uh, funding sources, uh, if they're local or whether they come outside. So, um, I think that's all I have for tonight. School Board meets tomorrow night. I'll be attending there. They're working on making a transition to a new superintendent. And, uh, it's exciting to see, um, uh, our school, as, as Ginger said earlier tonight, uh, our city and our school district working so well together, uh, in finding common interests and common ways of supporting one another. So, uh, some of that is through individual volunteer efforts on your parts. And, uh, I want to echo her words of appreciation to you for that. So I think that's all we have. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Second.
All right. It's moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. Tammy, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Eichel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we are adjourned at 8:37 PM.